Hello everyone! Good afternoon, good evening, good morning to everyone who is joining today in this special session of the Brazilian Symposium in Bioinformatics. Thank you very much to all the organizers of this great symposium, and thank you for inviting us to have this special session. So I want to talk about the RIA Bio, which is the sponsor of this session, and I want to tell you a little bit about what RIA Bio is. So if we can start the presentation... So, thank you very much. For those who don't know, RIA Bio was founded in 2020. It was an initiative of several countries in Ibero-America with many researchers, students, and also companies. That was funded by CTEP to have this project running from 2021 to 2024. Please, next one. Okay, so RIA Bio, as I told you, it's now formed by 172 researchers, it's 35 groups, 65 institutions, and there are also several companies and startups. And at this moment, there are 10 countries that are part of this initiative. RIA Bio means, in Spanish, is Red, Iberoamericana, the Inteligencia Artificial and Big Biodata, which is International Network of Artificial Intelligence applied to big biodata. This initiative is to be able to share between the countries all the facilities and the expertise of the researchers, and also to get closer to companies with whom we can collaborate. Our leader of RIA Bio is Elizabeth Tapia, who is in Argentina. But we are having a very horizontal group, and we have meetings more or less every month or every two months. And we want to invite also other countries who will be interested in joining RIA Bio groups or countries, institutions to join this initiative. You are all very welcome. Please, next one. So we already had several meetings, like online meetings, but we finally had our first annual meeting in this 2021, which was held last week, November 18 and 19, and it took place in Salamanca, Spain. And we had a hybrid meeting with some presentations online and some in-person presentations. And we had about 40 presentations, and it was a really fruitful meeting. And this has allowed us to get to know the work of other groups and to start having some collaborations among us. Next one. So I just want to take the opportunity to invite you all to the next annual meeting of the RIA Bio, which will take place in Queretaro, in Mexico, in November 2022. And this will be also part of the ICCV, the International Society in Computational Biology, together with the International Conference in Bioinformatics organized by Mexican society in bioinformatics and with also SOIBIO, which is Ibero-American society also in computational biology. So if you want to follow us, here we have our handle in Twitter. And so RIA Bio is the sponsor of this session in this moment of artificial intelligence bioinformatics. And the idea of this session is just to showcase what is the importance of artificial intelligence in bioinformatics in this very moment. Due to this great amount of data that biological problems generate, we realize that artificial intelligence starts to... not starts, but has started to play a very, very important role now in bioinformatics. So in this moment, we will have five short presentations by people from different countries. And the idea is that after the presentations, of course, after each presentation, if you have a question, please just write it down and we will let the speaker know. But it's important that at the end of the presentations, we stay here and we make a discussion of how you think or how you see artificial intelligence going, how this is going to help the field of bioinformatics or what we should take into account when we use artificial intelligence when we do bioinformatics. So please stay with us in this interesting discussion. So thank you very much, everybody who has joined. And if you are here just by chance because you are mistaken, just please stay, it's going to be fun. So we will start with our first presentation that is going to be by Flavio Spitala. Flavio Spitala is an assistant researcher in the bioinformatics group in Cifasis in Argentina. And he will talk about factor graph annotation of long non-coding RNAs. Thank you very much, Flavio, for accepting to talk about your work with us in this special session.
Thank you. See this presentation? It's okay? Okay. Good afternoon, good evening, or good morning to the audience. My name is Flavio Seguel Spitala. I had PhD in computer science and I work in bioinformatics groups of Cifasis Rosario Argentine. Before starting my speech, I would like to thank Maribel Hernandez and the Brazilian Computer Society for the invitation to this evening. It's very red sea for here. This speech I will take in about the GO annotation, the long non-coding RNA using factor graphs models. Firstly, I will have a conceptual framework to the problem of the functional annotation with long non-coding RNA. Next, we'll briefly explain what gene ontology is. Then I will call hierarchic classification based on graph works. And finally, we will discuss further improved and could be incorporated my method. Okay. The first question is: Why is the annotation of long non-coding RNA is important? The study of long non-coding RNA in more 200 nucleotides is central to understanding the development and progression of main complex diseases, for example, Alzheimer, Parkinson, and BRCA. Unlike proteins, the functionality of long non-coding RNA is only subtly encoded in their primary secondary. In long non-coding RNA, it's not here. The functionality is relationship with the secondary structure. Therefore, the secondary similarity method, for example BLAS, are not directly applicable because this method is not accuracy good for the annotation long non-coding in this case. However, the in-silicon methods annotation, for example inference to interaction network, PPI, is bad because the expensive are extensive experimental studies are required by this network. In these other works, this method is very good when you take a lot of samples annotation but independent the organism. Therefore, in the community scientific search, they need to arise the developed computational method for the annotation when they're starting from the second gene and the end of the set of functionality, where, for example, virus, for example, maturity in plant, for example, immunity in humans, and very all functionality do you think in the heart. Here, a briefly, mainly gene ontology consortium provide an ontology of terms for describing the properties of functionalities and their relationships in species independent demarc. In this work, this annotation is not dependent on organisms. For example, here molecular function, the father is the catalytic activity, is not dependent on the organism, for example, human, E. Drosophila, Arabidopsis, etc. It's okay. GO is divided to three subdomains: molecular function, here molecular cellular component, and biological process. This subontology is characterized to three subdomain: cellular component is characterized the cellular compartment; molecular function, the functionality of molecular; and biological process is a set of the molecular function annotation. It's important in this picture, these two things. The first, the functionality of the different subdomains, here, 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 can be connected through the links, black, blue, white, and dot lines, is different relationships in annotation. This annotation can be between molecular function and cellular component, for examples, another inner there, they are subdomains. The second is important to see is another details we observe it with the descendant on the ontology. Here, descendant, the color blue and white is indicate the number of the samples in this work. The top levels annotation, higher number of annotation. But we need you specific GO terms, for examples, here, Waaga proteolysis, is not more annotation. Therefore, it's a problem in the dependent the method of classification for use. Another problem is in biological process, for example, the another quantity of samples in the top is more desbalanced respectively the another's GO terms. Here, the factor graph long non-coding annotation for long non-coding RNA. This model, here in blue, is not our proposal, is divided in two states. In the first state, here, characterization to second BLAS is an encoding base approach using the fuse, the primary and secondary structure information of long non-coding molecules. And the secondary step is the classification method of hierarchical types. In this work is a classification binary, is the M support vector machines, and the law, the super sum product algorithm to check the consistence of the prediction of individuality's functionality GO term. The if, the result, is a GO term consistence of prediction. We are, we focus in characterization of long non-coding and then the method of hierarchical of long non-coding RNA. Well, these methods newly, the first step. The first is encoding a character and is transformation to a vector to a fixed length because the method of classification needs a number fixed to input. It's okay. For example, here, the secondary structure of long non-coding have six substructure: bagels, stems, inner bagels, and etc. In this method, to incorporate these statistics to in the characterization to this BLAS. And the first step in the method of characterization is the future aggregation. It's no more than the cameras to the new alphabet generated to the smile representation is not because the dot bracket and the primary RNA sequences to alphabet the fourth character, R, U, G, I. It's okay. Here is the main, the factor graph model. Our propose the factor graph model allows a graphical modeling of classified systems, that is, collection of the interaction as function. Here, G and F are function and the circle is nodes observable and Latin nodes. Observable is provided to the support vector machine and Latin node is the GO term. Here, the result in the GO consistent predictions. Okay. The relationships, for example, parents and child is encoding and into the function. In this case, is logical function. G is the modeling. The probability distribution function is this, in this work, is the real, not real support vector machine. In this work, is the C, that the noise represented for the function. Perfect. One dissolution, a graphical model, is something why is possible to carry out in the inference but the message passes algorithm such styles some products. Here, the inference is the release propagation of some product. Some product is the generalization of release propagation methods of factor graph. Here, the logical F3 or H4 adding a flow the move passages. The passage is direction, for example, G4AX4 or the F4AX4. Another test too. We can mention that the messages function moved through the factor graph annotation independently of the each and another situation. This approach, a map solution because we are in graph web cycles. Finally, the performance, the long non-coding RNA is presented. Here, four different algorithms, models are not models. Presentation: Daño radio, homo sapiens, musculus, and scars program. The precision recall and F score is good and the hierarchical precision, hierarchical recall and hierarchical F score suggesting this method is would approximate from the long non-coding RNA sequences to study another functionality. Finally, the promising accuracy graphics, here and here, the range of 65 and 80%, we are observed at around the four datasets. Suggested that the factor graph long non-coding classifier can efficiently annotate from row long non-coding sequences across the completed full gene ontology GO terms. In conclusion, the factor graph efficiently provides an interpretable and scalable graphical model for the GO functional annotation. Thank you for your attention. And here show the research group and the photo of my city. Questions? Here?
Flavio, thank you very much for the nice presentation about this factor graphs, which I think many people... I think many people don't know.
Flavio, thank you very much for the nice presentation about this fact.
So are there any questions or we just better have a discussion at the end? We can ask all types of questions at the end. Anybody has a question? I don't see any at the moment. So we continue and then we have a discussion on all the topics then at the end of the session, okay? Okay. So our next speaker is Angelica Alejandra Serrano Rubio, who is a postdoctoral research at the Center of Research and Advances Studies in Mexico and the Department of Computer Science. And she will talk about bi-clustering analysis related to tumor progression of hepatocellular carcinoma. Thank you very much, Alejandra, for joining today this special session.
Thank you very much. Hello everyone, my name is Alejandra Serrano. And I'm going to talk about bi-clustering analysis related to tumor progression of hepatocellular carcinoma. I'm going to start talking about bioinformatic analysis of microrhives. And this kind of analysis is generally performed through the analysis of genetic expression matrix. And this kind of matrix generally are stored in different formats such as database or plain text or any kind of database. So there is no generic way, there is no generic way to store them. However, this kind of data need to be analyzed. And generally, this analyze is made up by differential gene expression analysis that consists in quantify the gene expression level in order to determine the relationship between the genotype and the phenotype. Generally, this kind of analysis is made up through the direct comparison of expression level with the aim to of knowing the their function or implication in some disease and determine the psychological alterations and their implication in pathological process. The algorithm that always we use is are based on determining techniques. And this kind of determining techniques are focused on group analysis. And in these cases, we can identify two kind of techniques and call it clustering and bi-clustering. The first one are based on fine groups of genes or condition that have a related expression level in all the set of conditions or all the set of conditions. And the techniques and bi-cluster techniques are based on find out a sub cluster that have a subset of genes and subset of conditions that have a related or anti-correlated a gene expression level. And in this kind of techniques, a pattern can belong to more than one group than one cluster or not belong to any cluster. In this case, this kind of techniques are classified as unsupervised learning algorithms. Is to say, there is not purely knowledge of dataset to be analyzed. And this is the main, this is the main characteristic that the solution needs to be validated through multidisciplinary work. And another problem that have this kind of techniques are the, is that these techniques are considered as NP hard problem. Is to say, there is no algorithm in polynomial time that obtain the best solution. Its execution is carried out as follow. We have an input that can be a database and plain text or any kind of file and a source code. And this source code is analyzed or is executed in an architecture composed by an operating system, a memory, and kind of hard disk or a processor. And this source code is compilation to obtain a binary code. This binary code is execute many times to, in order to obtain a biological... congruence. Is to say, the the solution obtained by the execution of the binary code considering the input is congruent with the biologic, 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 sorry, biological reality. So in this case, we can say that more data, we need more time. The solution, in this case, we need to optimize the runtime to obtain a result, a to obtain results in less, in less time. So the solution is the use of high performance computing. Take, in this case, we need to take advantage of expert, expert knowledge to obtain a good performance. Our, our solution is based in optimize the source code using mechanism based on high performance computing, as CUDA, open M P, and take account the architecture where the source code will be executed. And in this case, we use M P I to, to, in order to share a data between the, between the, between the computers or nodes that compose an archit- an architecture. Then we need to, we will, we will obtain a binary code, code that we we call. Start a source code is to say, is the code that will be optimized by mechanisms based on CUDA, open M P, and M P I. Consider all the things that are used to, that are used and composed and architecture. Then we propose an hybrid, a regional, a parallel algorithm, algorithm design in order to improve computational performance. In this case, we need to classify large, high dimensional data set. So we need to contribute the refinement, refinement of the centrals. We will consider, consider a, a set of computers linked by a communication network. These set of computers are imperfect and prone to failures. So we need to each computer, each computer or node solve a problem of clustering and big clustering. Each, each node or, or, or computer have own a memory, a processor, a GPU, or, or, and each computer have own a hard disk, are, are, and each computer can be, can have the same characteristics of the other computers or different characters. To solve this, this problem, we propose a solution based on consensus protocol. In this kind of protocol, we say that each node in distributed architecture have a status. First, all the nodes or computers have the, have a follower status. And if any node resigns a, a, an order or a petition about a, or their node, this, this node or this computer, eh, eh, oh, sorry, this node, eh. This node, eh, ah, sorry. This node request, uh, request about of all the, of a request, each node request a. This node requests about of the others node to pass a, another state as candidate. This, then, the node that is a candidate, eh, pass the next status, call a leader. The leader is the, is a node, eh. The leader is in charge to orchestrate all the operation of the node and the others of performing the operation that the leaders indicate. Then, eh, well, the algorithm starts with the initial, initial, initialization of all the parameters. Then, through the leader node in a distributed architecture, eh, and until a convergence a criterion is meet, the parameter, the parameters or the centrals in this case are propagation to others node. Where each of the other node or computers execute an, an specific algorithm, like Cummins or any kind of algorithm of the clustering. And then when a node, a computer finish the, the execution of a, a specific algorithm, eh, send, they send all the results to the, to the leader, leader node. When a convert, convert, um, when a compare criterion are meet, eh, the algorithm, the algorithm fin- finish. We, we did a computational time analysis based on the type of operations performed. In this case, we, we obtain a, again, of a one point thirty-three X in a homogeneous architecture composed by four nodes. And we will, we, we can see that we, we, we need more computational time when, when we are going, when, when we did a operation related on, eh, eh, execution, execution elemental operations. Then this kind of operation are parallelized, consider CUDA and open M P. This algorithm, this algorithm was applied to biinformatic analysis based on the analysis of hepatocel- hepatocellular carcinomes. In this case, we, when, what our case is study was the, was a data set related on the temporal development of, of preneoplastic nodules and hepatocellular carcinomes. The data sets contain a, well, was, was described as a high dimensional data set. And in this case, we have a, a set of experimental conditions determined by the time in each, in each state of, of, of development of the disease, eh, as, as seven days, eleven days, sixteen days, one month, six, seven, sorry, five months, nine months, eh, eh, and so on. And then we, we select nine months to, to analyze because we have the information related on novel, not novel, tumor and not tumor. And then we, we have the research question determined by, try to understand the hepatocyte biological model. In this case, we want to know the functional classification of genes involved in the tumor development. Based on the idea that we have the basal condition and there is something where we didn't know what, but eh, this kind of thing that we didn't know, we didn't meet, eh, eh, generates the presence of novel or the absence of novel. And if we have a novel, eh, this novel is, is, eh, is, this novel generate tumor. In this, in this analysis, we, first, we did a pre-processing of the data and we obtained the ninety-four percent of genes that were included in the experiment, 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 experiment. So the genes or patterns were removing because this kind of genes were considered as outliers. In this case, we use a technique called housekeeping. Then we, we did a, a statistical analysis, statistical data analysis. So eh, in this case, we, we, we can, when, we can see a basic genetic gene silencing based on the baseline condition. Eh, in this case, we can say, we, we can say that eh, the, the gene expression level eh, decreased where in the first quartile and, and there is more dispersion in the tier, in the tier quartile. So eh, we can see a, a gene inactivation system for the, for the production of structural proteins. And then we apply the clustering and big clustering algorithm. This, this algorithm, these algorithms were paralyzed, consider the, the algorithm that I present in the first part. And we analyze the, the genes involved in the basal condition, in the novel condition, and the tumor condition. The ten percent that are present in the three condition, we, we didn't take account because, into account because eh, this kind of of genes are present in all the, in all the moment. So we are going, we are, we analyze eh, the, the thirteen and eighteen, and eighteen percent of genes involved in the present of novel and the gen eh, present in the novel eh, condition are, are when, eh, and present in the tumor condition. So we are, we, we did an ontologic analysis and we obtained that the, eh, ah, hmm, we obtained that, ah, we obtained that there, there are a lot eh, genes involving in metabolic function. And eh, we, in this case, we can, we can say that eh, this, the cell needs a, a lot nutrients and then we need eh, so, what, the cell needs to, needs to have a metabolic function to generate more nutrients. And in this case, if we need, if the cell needs nutrients, so the, the cell need more energy. This, this conclusion will obtain by the biological part. So our work only was determined by the analysis, perform an analysis and the in silico analysis. And we obtain an, an, a maximum speed of three point ninety-six X using only open M P and fifty-six point ninety-eight X using only CUDA. In this way, we increase the traditional optimization guide by the, by a computer expert. We can say that in this work, we have focused, focused on, on performing and generic parallelization based on, only on the parallelization of elemental operation and on without taking account the, the complexity of this kind of, of algorithms. And there is not yet a general algorithm to, that solve the problem of clustering or big clustering in biologic, by, by, by geological data. So if we are, if we are going to concentrate in a, concentrate in a parallel side, one kind of algorithm, eh, this solution, this solution eh, not be a general, general solution. So we need to, we need to work in parallelize eh, the elementary operations to improve the, in order to improve the performance eh, performance, the algor- the algorithms eh, general eh, in a general way. So this is all for my, from me. I don't know if you have some questions and thank you. So.
Thank you very much, Alejandra. This is very interesting. This is something that we have to think of when, when we do artificial intelligence, we always think like, okay, let's do improve it, let's do artificial intelligence, but we don't take into account of the data input, outputs, eh, and, and computer processing and everything that we need. So this give us an, an insight of what we have also to take into account, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So eh, I don't see questions at the moment. Or maybe I don't see them. Do you see any? But I think we will have a general discussion about this and other, the other topics at the end, at the end of the presentations. Okay? Thank you very much. Okay. So. Our next speaker is Amirele Carolina Sosa Ferreira Costa. And she's from the graduate program at the University of Brasilia. And she will tell us about investigating the performance of machine learning methods for predicting non-coding RNAs using in silico construction of artificial data. Thank you very much, Amirele.
Thank you. Good afternoon. See, see my presentation? Okay. My name is Amirele. I will present about my master research and joint work with my professor Valdery, professor Joan Victor, my advisor Maria Milia, and professor Peter. I, I will follow this content introduction. So here we have some examples of no coding RNAs and in particular, the small nucleolar RNAs is not. He studied this work. Some methods for NCRNAs and prediction use homology based approaches such as Blasch and Inferno and machine learning based approach such as Isner Parte, two point zero, C V M Portrait, and Mustard, the Mustard, using artificial neural networks. So our motivation is identifying NCRNAs is very, is a very important task. However, eh, when we have to the inference of NCRNAs considering large evolutionary distance, which involves research in homology. Machine learning methods did not achieve eh, the expected success for a systematic investigation of the performance of eh, machine learning methods for homology inference in NCRNAs. NCRNAs. We need large controlled and known eh sets eh of desk with evolutionary distance. Eh, this test, this task is not simple as a, a large volume of reliable NCRNAs eh that can be used is not now. Oh, the problem. Eh, machine learning methods did not activate the expected success for homology inference, inference task. For example, to predict classes of NCRNAs considering large evolutionary distance. Eh, objective, main object, object, objective is creating sets of artificial NCRNAs which cover different evolutionary distance and evolu- evolutionary eh evaluate, evaluating machine learning methods in search of NCRNAs homology using the artificial data. And Isornas, the Isornas are of the class of small, small NCRNAs eh, and they classified in two main types eh C D box and H A C box. Eh, their structures are represented in figures and, and A and B. Machine learning. So for performance evaluation, we implemented in Jupiter Notebook, TOE, and machine learning models, Support Vector Machine, Artificial Neural Network and Handel Forest. Eh, data source. I use marine species, Siona Intensinales, is an attractive species for studies on evolution because its eh development, development is fast and has a compact genome. So eh, data processing in order to obtain sequences of Isornas within the intro eh without correlation between eh each pair of then. Eh, therefore, we retrieve intronic sequence eh with Isornas that are not eh correlated. Eh, this eh method description or method is divided into in two parts, creating artificial, artificial Isornas and evaluating the machine learning methods. In creating the artificial Isornas, we select a C D box and H A C box sequence and eh generated four balanced trees using for types of eh point mutations, substitution, insertion, deletion and substitution with codons. Eh, from there, we built our database of according to the percentage of mutations of the three sequences. Eh, we extract features from each class and evaluate eh machine learning methods. Okay, and results and conclusions. Eh, the build for eh mutation trees eh for C D box and H A C box Isornas, the trees with eh one hundred brands is children. Eh, database with eh five thousand positive sequences, sequences and five thousand negative sequences. Eh, we chose substitution to discuss eh results in more detail. Okay, BLAS results. We tested the BLAS N eh tool with the substitution three sequences. Eh, the first eh, the first experiment with Isornas inside eh the intro, we obtained eh one hundred percent of meds, but these meds eh are sporadic hits in other parts of the intro. Eh, in second experiment eh Isornas outside the intro, you obtained eh meds only in the database with ten percent eh mutations eh for C D box and for H A C box eh in ten and eh twenty percent eh, but eh were, there were no finds with more than eh seventy percent of the medist sequence. Eh, we obtained similar results eh with BLAS N regardless of the mutations model eh for sets with more mutations eh no meds. So eh, machine learning results for C D box. Eh, the, we, we achieved good eh results with accuracy above ninety-nine, ninety-nine percent. Eh, the classifiers show it, show it that the more mutations, the performance eh, the, the crisis. These are the, the hockey curve of the classifiers in each databases. Eh, A N, A N and S V N obtained excellent hockey curves with eh ten percent mutation eh with eh fifty percent the performance was eh decreased. Eh, so we tested machine learning classifiers with a reduced number of features to investigate cases where the biological features are not known. Eh, in these experiments, you can see that the features set is quite important for C D box precision prediction. If eh relevant biological character, characteristics are not known, the performance of the classifier is decreasing. Eh, these are the hockey curve is well below the eh, the three classifiers. Um, for H A C A, the results were decreasing, but accuracy was below seventy percent. These are the hockey curves. Eh, we also tested eh with the reduced number of features, but didn't get eh big chance eh the, in the results. Eh, these are the hockey curves well below. Okay, conclusions. Eh, machine learning methods can be competitive for homology inference tasks if sufficiently eh large eh, large sets of independent sequences can be constructed. Powerful eh construction of artificial data is a processing approach. The comparison with a reduced set number of features showed eh how important eh non-biological characteristics are important for machine learning classifiers to achieve good performance. Next steps eh, the perspectives eh compare the performance of machine learning methods with more eh sophisticated homology research methods such as cor- covariance models, thermodin- thermodan- thermodynamic models and apply eh the artificial eh data set construction methods, methods to other NCRNA families and evaluate the performance of machine learning methods. And testing different configuration eh for artificial neural network and compare with state of the art works. Eh, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Amirele, for, for the nice presentation. This is also a very different approach of how machine learning can be very helpful for like long-lasting problems in bioinformatics um such as homology detection, right? Um, so thank you very much. Eh, we have currently no questions. And we continue with our next speaker. Um. So now eh, we will listen to Lucas Maciel Vieira eh, who's also a graduate student at the University of Brasilia, who will tell us about machine learning to predict non-coding RNAs. Thank you very much, Lucas.
Hi, everyone. It's a pleasure to, to talk a little bit about machine learning bioinformatics here. Uh, let me know if you guys can hear me well and see my screen. Okay. So basically eh, today I'm going to have like more than a kind of a small talk, talking about machine learning to predict non-coding RNAs. Eh, the main goal here is not to talk about a specific project, but like to build a timeline of projects in which I use a machine learning bioinformatics eh and show like the main outline of how we build these pipelines and its results. Okay. So firstly, I will start a, a little bit like why you should use machine learning? Okay, eh, some of the previous presenters already talked a little bit about machine learning for what is used. And basically, it's used to optimize a performance criterion by using example data or past experience. So basically, if you have a data, a database or data, we can, we try to build generalizations and prediction models to get information from this data. Okay? And why it's good to use this in bioinformatics? Eh, because right now we have several databases, like mostly of them are open source, presenting biological molecular data. Many on this case here, I'm talking about no code RNAs. We have a lot of databases with no code RNAs and its disease-related information, right? And several biological studies these past few years have shown that using machine learn is a good choice to predict specific molecular classes or its interactions with diseases. Um, now I'm going to present here like eh, the works in which I started using machine learning. Basically, I focused there on predicting the interRNAs. Eh, previous, someone already talked a little bit of long, long no coding RNAs that are very eh studied molecular, kind of molecular nowadays because of its relationship with diseases and et cetera. And link RNAs are a specific kind of long no code RNAs, right? On this specific study that I started in two thousand fifteen, eh, I built a pipeline using Support Vector Machine, that's a supervised machine learning model to predict link RNAs in humans and mouse, okay? At the time, we just had like one method that used to do that for, for link RNAs specifically, that was IC RNAs. And basically, we tried to replicate eh its pipeline, making a few changes to see if we got better results and how good the results were. Eh, and here we can start, I seen the main outline of a machine learning eh pipeline that I used to build, where I have basically three steps, where I have to build a database with reliable data, remove the outliers. We have select some features that is going to characterize eh the data points we want to classify. And afterwards, we build the prediction model itself. In this case, we used a data from Avon and Ensemble and got longer link RNAs and protein coding transcripts from humans and mouse. We like cleared a little bit the data and then we started using some features that are supposed to characterize eh link RNAs against protein coding transcripts. And at the time, we used these three features like conservations, the off length and off proportion and some G entry nucleotides repetitions that at the time, the studies showed that were like eh, characterized link RNAs, okay? So with these three eh feature sets, we make a story, we, we made a story with S V N where we tried each eh feature by itself and build a model with it and try the combination of them and all of them to see how good they were in predicting link RNAs. Eh, so here we could see that the off characteristics was a little bit eh, it was the most important feature to predict that. But when we combined all the features, we got eh good results, right? Like near ninety percent. And it was the first results I, I had at the time, okay? And then I kept working on this. And I got eh out from human and mouse and tried to build a classifier for link RNAs in plants that we didn't have at the time. And we had a specific use cases for sugar cane and maize. So it was really eh nice to do that. And again, my pipeline followed the same outline, the creating the database, getting the features and the results. At this times, I changed a little bit the features because the conservation, it was a kind of a difficult feature to get and only had for mice and humans and not for our organisms. And as the previous work showed, it's not that important eh when mixing with the other features. So we just used our off length proportion and some G entry nucleotides that I got by eh to from our partner from the lab. And with this, it was a nice pipeline where I got an accuracy eh around eighty-two percent for eh sugar cane and ninety-seven percent for maize. Eh, it was good because we got a, a really big list of transcripts that eh would be predicted from our collaborators from eh University Federal of Rio de Janeiro. And from all the transcripts, the one that we predicted eh, we also eh, the ones we predicted, we did a differential expression study eh for some annotations of eh that had red strip diseases. And the one that was most eh differential expressed was tested in laboratory and was confirmed to be a link RNA and related with the MiR four zero eight. That was our know to be related with the red strip diseases. So now it was good because we got the confirmation in lab that our method kind of worked, at least was a good shot. Eh, and then I kept going. Until this point, I used Support Vector Machine. And then I said, oh, maybe I can try a new method. Eh, at the time, before deep learning got very, very, very popular, eh, most of the algorithms were using eh Ensemble, that is a machine learning method that tries to combine or other methods to have better predictions. And that's what I did. We just follow the same steps, just send a little bit the G entry nucleotides frequencies and the databases. And by using Ensemble, we tried a method of consensus in majority using um C three, K N N, S V N and Renal Forests. And we got like nice results eh same, in which the Ensemble methods performed better than the individual eh methods. And it was nice because you also did a feature extraction and study to see which feature were more eh, let's say, reliable or more important to predict, to make these predictions. And here again, we have the off length and of proportion and some combinations of the G entry nucleotides, okay? And until this point, I worked with eh classifying link RNAs. And afterwards, I started to study a little bit more of link RNAs and I stepped on predicting, trying to predict some biomarkers in cancer, right? And these biomarkers in cancers, basically, I was studying longer RNAs, mRNA and micro RNAs. And here eh, although I have an outline, pipeline to predict eh the classes I want for the biomarkers, I got way more focused on doing the biological analysis part because the other projects eh were kind of questioned because, oh, these G entry nucleotides, they really have any biological meaning or is just a computational artifact? And I started focusing a little bit more on the biological step where I studied better the features, I built better the database. And here, my pipeline was a little bit different, where I got the molecules, constructed eh competitions and our, and our networks, check the function, the biological eh function of the molecules, the survival curve eh of the patients related with the molecules. And I did, we did this just to check if this really have biological meaning at these biological features. And up to now, we just did this biological part, but I'm currently working of combining these biological features that I found with some clinical features and trying to predict with machine learning, which of these features are really related to the colorectal cancer. That's my study case. And basically, I'll try to predict the patient cancer stage or its survival curve. Okay? And here is just a picture of the CERNA, the competition of those RNAs that I got on this part here, divided by the types of colorectal cancer and it's a nice picture. And like basically, these are the projects that I am using machine learning to predict no code RNAs in cancer. Now I'm more focused on getting its eh relationship with diseases, diseases, mainly cancer. And just eh, these are what I got at the end, my biological biomarker. And just, these are what I got at the end, my biological biomarkers that I use as features on my next step. So I think it's this focus on the biological part to get the features is way more easy so the biologist that's going to use my work to understand. And I hope it gets good results when I end the machine learning part. Okay? And finally, this is some published work that's related with the works I presented. And up to the discussion, mainly, I'm just going to show some points that always comes up when I'm building these models. Firstly, do we have enough data to build these models? Or like the amount of data is so low that most of the models we are going to build are going to be overfitted or not generalized? This is one point. The other is the feature selection, like longer RNAs and link RNAs, they are not, they were not well-known. And even now, we don't know like features that really characterizes them. So when we create features using like computational methods that like the frequency of G entry nucleotides, are they really meaningful or just like artifacts or noise? And that's the next point also, because like maybe they don't have biological meaning, so it's difficult to upset them to predict what we want. And finally, the results validation. Sometimes you have the data on the public databases, you make the model, the prediction is good, but mainly, it's nice to know in the lab at least once or twice if it's really working. So this is what I had to discuss. And just acknowledging of who's supporting my work. And if you guys have any questions, I'm going to answer them.
Thank you very much, Lucas, for the nice presentation. You brought up several important questions that we have to address when we do machine learning or deep learning or in general, artificial intelligence. I'm sure we will have an interesting discussion about this when, after the talks. So our, our last speaker is João Victor Deraujo Oliveira. He's also a graduate student at the University of Brasilia. And he will talk about Snow Report 2.0, new features and a refined support vector machine to improve snow RNA identification. Thank you, João Victor, for being today here in this special session. João, you are muted.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, now I think, I think that you can hear me. Thank you.
All right. I'm sorry for that. So today, I'm going to talk about Snow Report 2.0. It's a tool published in 2016. And basically, I'm going to start with a background, then present Snow Report 2.0, and finally, open the discussion. First of all, small nuclear RNA or snow RNAs are small, no coding RNAs classified based on their characteristic sequence elements called boxes. We have two here. We have the CD box and 8-ACA box is no RNA. They are classified based his boxes that are motifs that you cure in a specific place. Here, we can see the secondary, the canonical secondary structure representation of each of them. They normally tends to fold in this spatial structure. And since it not conserve it in primary sequence, it's a very challenging problem to, we can use actually, machine learning methods. Machine learning methods, I really like this, this definition. It's a multidisciplinary field, such as math, statistics, computer science, and many others. And it aims to build computer programs that automatically improves by experience. So we can use a variety of algorithms to simulate human learning by exploring patterns in the data, transform that information. This can be viewed on, for example, support vector machine algorithms that we try to build a hyperplane with a maximum margin of separation with two, for example, classes. We can, for example, classify snow RNAs and non-snow RNAs using this technique. So, Snow Report 1.0, published in 2010 by Yana Hartel. It's a tool that identifies too many classes of snow RNA in single sequences using a combination of secondary structure prediction using Vienna RNA package and machine learning using SVM. The good, good thing in this tool, that it does not use information of putative target sites. And it was training only with mammalian snow RNA sequences. The additional part here is that it did not use multiple alignments for identify is nor in genome. And in 2016, we published Snow Report 2.0, that improves and extend the original method by extracting new features for both CD and 8-ACA box from, for example, the secondary structure, from minimum free energy features and others. E, we are, we're developing a more sophisticated technique in SVM training phase using recent data, not only from mammalions, but from vertebrate organisms. And we have a careful choice of the SVM parameter C and gamma. Then, we actually use updated versions of tools and databases used for construction of the original version of Snow Report. It was already published in BYMC by Informatics, if one would like to read. So, this method, Snow Report 2.0, starts with the dataset building, where we have plenty of vertebrate snow RNAs. And we use a kind of technique to separate, to create two datasets, based on the clusterization of the sequences in order to create a way to split these two datasets based on sequence similarity. In order to use, for example, one dataset for training and one dataset for test and do several times this in order to, to check our performance. So with these sequences, we can extract features using this workflow. Basically, we try to find candidates looking for first for the boxes. For example, in 8-ACA box is no RNA candidates, I try to find these eight boxes using specific position weight matrices, PWMs. And I'm trying to fold the secondary structure between before each box and after, and after each box until ACA box. First of all, before each box, if you look from the figure, the secondary structure, we not know what is the start of the sequences in secondary structure. So we can use RNA L fold in order to estimate the start position. Then, we can make some steps to check if the structure folded in RNA fold is suitable, is similar to the ones that we know in 8-ACA or CD box. Since we have a correct structure, for example, in ACA box, a double hairpin loop structure, we can actually extract the features. The same occur on CD box when we try to find candidates C and D. And in the middle of them, we can check, for example, some structures like inter-infilter that it appears on the, close by the C and D boxes and close to the stand terminal of CD box. If it presents some intrinsical features that is already known on the literature, on the many other researches previously, we can fold this secondary structure using RNA fold and we check if we have the similar, a similar secondary structure of CD box. If we have that, we can extract the features. This is a bit restrict, we restrict Snow Report to find very canonical sequences. That's a good point, since we have many known expertise on snow RNA. They have to present some features to be a snow RNA. But actually, we have a problem. We can't find snow RNAs very different, very non-canonical, like we're going to see on the validation phase. So we start with features extraction, we extract many features in blue is the new ones, comparison of the first version. Here, we have, for example, some informations about secondary structure, GC content, and many others. Actually, in CD box, we have a plenty of new ones here, but the blue ones just vanished. Okay? So extracting the features, we can use actually, Snow Report. Snow Report works like a feature extractor. Then we can use these feature vectors to create a model that can classify a single sequence in snow RNA or not. So we use SVM scale on the feature vector. We use the grid search technique to find good C and gamma meta parameters and use this to train our model. Our model is trained using SVM train and then we can, we can have a model that can be used to predict snow RNAs. And actually, in this workflow, we actually add some performance measures that it not appears in lead SVM. We have, we use it three types of measures. Fix a threshold, where we have, for example, probability to be a snow RNA or not, like BSVM. And this, we can measure by accuracy and app score. We have dynamic threshold, where each sample, each positive sample will be used as a threshold and we compare this threshold with all the others samples. And then we can estimate average precision and area under the curve. And finally, to check the errors from our model, the discrepancy between our model with the reality, we use residual sum of squares. I'm not showing all the results, since it's too big. But from these two models we created, from CD box and 8-ACA box, we have good results compared to Snow Report using the same data. We have the app score more than 14.92% on CD box and app score better 10.9%, better than Snow Report 1.0. All performance measures is greater than 90, which is good, but actually, from non-canonical is nor RNAs, the accuracy is not so good. But it's, it's, it's very nice. For example, here, we have the validation phase, some papers that provide some sequences already known of snow RNAs. For example, in human, we find almost everyone. But in platypus, for example, which is a bit different, I'm computer science, but the platypus is a bit different from human and chicken, for example. And it not finds so many. The same occurs, for example, on the invertebrates, since our data was used from a vertebrate is nor RNAs. For example, on ACA, we have good results, but in CD box, we didn't achieve good results here. And Leishmania, we have, we will not have good canonical is nor RNAs. They are bit different, this kind of species. So even in Snow Report 1.0 and Snow Report 2.0, it find it anything. It didn't find anything here. That's a, I think it's a good discussion about this. So, Snow Report was a refinement of a previous version of Snow Report. It's available. I put this GitHub here to download, for you to download, but you can just put on Google, on Google, Snow Report 2, and you'll find it. We have, we have seen that we experimented with very different organism, have shown good performance, even in vertebrates, in the case of 8-ACA for CD box. I think the good way is to retrain or, for example, use another kind of features. That's one idea that I have, that to create specific datasets to identify better features for different kind of organisms. For example, we can use Snow Report to train and create a model for Leishmania 8-ACA boxes, for example. We have to use different approaches to fold the sequence and different machine learning methods. For example, we can use math-based feature extraction like complex networks or using some, for example, Fourier transforming to create a model that will be, I think it will be more suitable to identify non-canonical secondary structures of snow RNAs. I think it's a good idea. Actually, we already use some complex networks on this and present as a better result. But Leishmania is still a question mark problem. Another thing would be very nice with this project is to create a parallel version of Snow Report, since they can be used to screening a genome in order to find many snow RNAs. So this is my work. We have some papers very interesting in this field. And thank you all for this, this opportunity.
Thank you very much, João Victor, for this interesting update in Snow Report and for putting us up to date as well on what are the things that we, the challenges that we still have in the, in prediction. So if you, if we want, maybe now, we can open all the people, the cameras and microphones and we can talk about some of the challenges that we have in artificial intelligence. Rachel might also want to take part of this because she already suggested a couple of topics, right? So it would be nice to have you back there. Thank you. Yeah, so Rachel was already suggesting that for the group, to discuss about the challenges concerning, actually, the explainability and opacity of the models. We have heard, I remember since I was a bachelor student, we, we discuss about this very often, right? That we don't know, like all these artificial intelligence methods look like a black box or seem to work like a black box because we don't know what's, what's happening there. And so nowadays, there is this important discussion about the explainability of, of the models. So what do you think about this? Whoever wants to participate.
Hi, Marbel. I think that's a very interesting question about how to explain the machine learning methods, for example, for biologists and for ourselves from computer science. I think, for example, my, eh, Snow Report uses previous biological knowledge to find snow, is nor RNAs. But however, we are, we're, we see many other methods, recent methods that use, for example, math, mathematical basic feature extraction methods that is a bit difficult to understand the, what is this meaning? What is, what the machine learning method uses to, to say, this is a is nor RNA, for example? This is a very good question. I think it's a challenge we have now.
Yeah. Yeah, this is true. And also, as, as And also, as Raquel mentioned, especially now for deep learning, no? Like in deep neural networks. So what do you say about this, Raquel?
Yeah, I think that one point that is sensible is the healthcare system that is also trying to use machine learning techniques to support and do diagnosis and things like that. So I think that it's kind of, it's an open problem still, isn't it? We, like Jean-Vito mentioned, that these tests involving feature extraction, feature selection, maybe they can help. And another point that I add here is maybe that visualization techniques can also be used for a more deep understanding of the algorithms and the model construction. I think that is something that we have to deal with in the next years if we want to use artificial intelligence models for healthcare in biological sciences, life sciences in general.
Yeah, that's true. Well, it's also not easy to visualize this, no? How, for example, how a neural network works. So even though there are many models out there and we can see them like these recurrent neural networks or convolutional neural networks, even though we are computer scientists, we don't, not all of us are experts in the functions, optimization functions that deep neural networks use in every layer, for example, right? It's not that easy also to explain and to understand. Like, you have to really work in this field or like, many theoretical computer scientists are the ones that really understand how it works. But it's true that it's hard. I don't know. So if someone else, if someone has worked with deep neural networks, what you think about this?
When we are talking about this subject, about how important it is to understand and to explain what we are using? Like, I had a lot of these problems when predicting wrong RNA's and RNA's. Because like, we already don't know many biological features that characterize it. So when you get the machine to create new features, sometimes the combination of features that we are understanding is really difficult to pass to the biologists or even to the doctor, that this is really a real feature. And nowadays, on the computer science, like, right now, we just are using basically deep learning, where we have a lot of data. We just create like features and we accept the results because most of the tools that uses machine learning with deep learning work is now. But we have two main problems when applying this to bioinformatics, I see. First, we don't have enough data for most of our pipelines. Like, I think it was Daniel et al. that say that we need at least five data points for each group to start to perform well with deep learning, and mostly we don't have that. And the second is like, how we are going to make like health apps, like Raquel said, or to explain this to the biologist or to the doctor. So sometimes I try to use like feature reduction instead of dimensionality reduction, so I can keep the features as they understand, even if my model doesn't perform that good.
Thank you, Lucas. Yeah, this is true. And then there is also one more thing that actually Alejandra brought up in her presentation, right? That you also, so sometimes you don't have enough data. Sometimes you don't even have enough computation process, like power to do it, right? Or storage, even if you have the data, right? So what do you say about this, Alejandra?
So in this case, I think that neural ops can be explored in all the area. So as you can see, there are a lot of problems in large databases and the dimensionality and other kind of problems. So we must promote the multidisciplinary work, I think. And I am confident about that. And we must involve, we must involve in other areas as computer science experts. I think that the biology is an expert in biology and we need to help them to improve their analysis. I don't know. And as we say, there is no general solution to solve any problems, the biological problem. So all the problems are really different. And we must work in.
Thank you. There is also a question here or a comment from Marcelo Reyes from Butantan. He says, "For some problems, one workaround for the interpretability problem might be the usage of hybrid models in which one part is machine learning and the other one is a mechanistic description. For example, like ordinary differential equation system that describe the kinetics of chemical reaction." This is true. Actually, I think what Flavio was presenting is also kind of a hybrid, right, Flavio?
Yes. The hybrid models is not good. It is dependent on the organism because not all the organisms, for example, ode, I don't know, remember the system, in human or and the drosophila, sebrafish, a lot of tools with characterization, the RNA, and protein, gene products. But when you last the known organisms' models, you need the created and generated features about the sequences or the another tools prediction. For example, 3D tools nowadays, the accuracy of the models in 3D prediction are very poor, but the information is very good. However, the experimental evidence is not increased because they huge the volume in the machine learning. Machine learning tools increase and the experimental is the linear progress because the cost and the time consumed to the experimental. In my case, the evidence is very important because the confidentiality or reliability, the precision is a point crucial in the factor graphs, for example. In electronic evidence, a lot of nowadays, because BLAST-Go and others, ensemble methods, you annotated new functions, for example, and it's not true, this function is real. It's a problem nowadays in the machine learning method.
Yeah, that's true. Anyone else wants to comment on these hybrid models? I think it's very interesting.
Can I?
Yeah, may I, please?
Say something? Yeah, another hybrid model is the one from Jean-Vito that he used a pipeline where he used also a machine learning technique there, right? And so I think it's very common to build pipelines that have parts that use machine learning techniques and other parts, no. So I think that Marcelo is right, Marcelo Reyes. I would like to introduce some other things here. Although deep learning and machine learning methods and AI in general is being, they, all of these are being very used, very broadly used. The use of these methods, I think, they are very problematic, in fact. They are powerful and they are very easy to use. But as Maribel said, they are black boxes. And so when you use, you have not, not, this, this, in my opinion, this is not only with deep learning, but the methods are used in a not very clear way. And so people use methods that are not designed to be used in a particular context. And so I think this has to be addressed. And this is the work of Mirelli, for example. The features and variables that you use in these machine learning methods, they are very, the methods are very sensitive to them. So when Mirelli tested this, there are two main characteristics. One is this, the idea when you use more biological features, the methods act and the outcomes, the results are better. And when you don't know, the results are not so good. And so, and another thing is in the methods that she tested and for the particular non-coding RNA that she used in the test that were, where there is no RNAs, as far as the evolutionary distance, the poorest the results. So there are a lot of biological characteristics that have to be addressed. And usually, we are interested in finding out and discovering new results. And I think Lucas also mentioned some of these points. Let me see, to validate the results, a careful choice of input data. And Flavio just said, the data many times are not reliable. And so all of this has to be addressed. And of course, you have to be sure as much as you can that you are really modeling the biological characteristics, in fact, and you are using the right method. And you have to be sure that it was designed to do the things that you think they do. So these are, I think, you have to be very careful to use these methods, although they are very easy to use. This is the way, I think.
Yeah, this is very true. So Isabel says she agrees with you as well. I think we all agree with you. And also, don't forget that, so that they are at the end machines, right? So they are machines that we build and they learn from whatever we give. So if we give like lots of erroneous data or like messy data, they will learn from this. And then the output will be whatever they learn from this data, right? So nowadays, there is the big, this big trend, and I think it's very important about the coded bias. I don't know if you have actually watched the movie, seen the movie Coded Bias, where there is a bias on all the algorithms that identify, for example, faces, right? Like, they identify, they are more accurate when they identify male faces than female faces. Or they identify better white people than black people or brown people. And this is because the database is full with mainly male white faces, right? So if we feed our database, and this is the same case with bioinformatics, with biological data, right? So for example, if one of my colleagues had this problem that when he tried to identify certain types of proteins, the method is really good at identifying proteins that have this A-lix, right? But it's very bad at identifying other proteins. And then toxins are always identified as, only as this type of, the proteins that have this structure. But it's because the database is full of them because the other structures haven't been discovered. That doesn't mean that maybe all toxins are of this structure, right? So we have to be very careful because also, it's important to know that we don't have, so one thing is that bias in the data, but it's possible that your data is, so that it's not biased. So your data is, it's like, not biased. You can have 50/50, you know? But still, there is some bias because of other external reason, right? So one thing is imbalance data, that this is when you have more of this data than from this. And that's why then your outputs or your predictions are going to be, going to look more like one or they are going to be better at identifying one type. And this is when we have the imbalance data. But we can have balanced data and still have some bias. So this is very important to also distinguish and especially also in bioinformatics because we are using databases all the time, right? So I don't know if you have actually met or you have actually meet with these problems during the application of artificial intelligence methods in bioinformatics.
Can I talk? Sorry? Yes, sure, Ali.
Yeah, sure.
In data mining, especially in my area, we have some algorithms that allow to capture the main characteristics that help us to select the features that have more weight in a dataset as a principal component analysis, or I don't know. And this kind of algorithms help us to reduce the dimensionality of the data and reduce this bias or, I don't know. And also, we apply descriptive statistics to help us to understand in best way the dataset that we are analyzing. So I say there is no general solution and this kind of algorithms help us to understand and improve this kind of analysis, especially in biological data because not all the problems are the same thing.
Right, that's also true, yeah.
Maribel, there is an observation here from Isabel.
Yeah. So she says, "I'm a bit worried about some presentations on what exactly was considered machine learning, artificial intelligence, etc." I would like to collaborate a little bit. I'm completing my degree in data science. Yeah, this is actually very interesting because 20 years ago, everything was artificial intelligence, right? Like, everything was put in that box, as far as I remember. Like, all data mining, export systems, these neural networks, machine learning, everything was put in, if you remember, in artificial intelligence. But as each one of these areas was becoming stronger and stronger, right? Like, data mining at some point, then it kind of become a field by itself, right? Like, it is now data science or machine learning by itself. And now that it's separating kind of deep learning, creating a new, a new area by itself. But I think, like, as I learned, these all are like artificial intelligence methods. But I would like to hear the younger people, what you think it's artificial intelligence, whether there is a difference between artificial intelligence and machine learning, for example. whether there is a difference between artificial intelligence and, and machine learning, for example, as Isabel is asking. Mirella, or you haven't spoken, maybe you wanna give your opinion?
It's a changeable and to get features that are relevant to machine learning models. And in general, and databases that are large and old to train and test the models. And for Isabel, in using and different techniques and for machine learning supervisionate in my, in my work. It's difficult in database and because the size. And is important in science data. In general, I believe that a set of evaluation different metrics is essential and to be able to analyze a machine learning model in general.
Thank you, Mirella. Mia, do you wanna say something about this, what Isabel is asking?
No, I think this is a very, very broad discussion. And so I think that Isabel is a bit worried because yes, I think that if you make many of these meetings, the reflections and the talks are in many different ways. So I think that what is important of this meeting is to say that these methods, although they are really ready and you can use them very easily, you have to be very, very careful when you, you take them and you are, the researcher has to be worried about data and everything. And so these, these projects, they have to be very, very careful planet. You are not supposed to, ah, this is a good database and you don't investigate the quality of this data. And ah, I want to use this method, but you don't know exactly for what this method was designed to do. And these parameters are another characteristic of these methods that are very important to choose. I remember that in all the works of Lucas and Jean-Vito and the other students that developed projects like this, they, the parameters, when you changed them, results were sometimes very affected and very different. And so, I don't know, these debates, I think the message, if you, we can live with one, is that the projects have to be very, very carefully designed to really guarantee that the results are reliable. This is the, I think, the very good advice.
Important message.
I would like to add something, just like focusing more on Isabel's question about like the difference between artificial intelligence, machine learning. Basically, artificial intelligence is like a more broader concept where like basically we are trying to make the program smarter, you know? And machine learning is a little bit like kind of a subfield where basically, okay, your program is also smarter, but you are trying to make the machine understand by itself by giving data to it. So we have this concept of what is artificial intelligence, machine learning, even what's the difference of machine learning in statistics and Bayesian statistics. And as Mia said, it's like a really great discussion, but basically, we could say artificial intelligence is broader, machine learning is a part of it, and yeah, each one have its own specific.
Thank you, Lucas. So thank you, everyone. I know this was a bit short for discussion, but it was very interesting to hear you. Thank you for all the ones who presented your work, they were in different fields. You brought up different questions in, that we could discuss about. And it was very interesting to have your point of view in this challenging field. Maybe this is, this is just a beginning to start thinking and planning better our, our projects in artificial intelligence. So now the session is over and I want to say, just follow BSB tomorrow again. We have roundtables about in the afternoon about other, other interesting topics. And if you are also interested in, in this bioinformatics and artificial intelligence, try to join us next year in Mexico, in an in-person conference and meeting, okay? Thank you very much to everyone. Thank you very much to everyone who attended. Bye-bye.